Clock is actually over.
This meeting will come to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the play of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Benjamin here, Baylor here, Holman here, Kazdor here, Sardina here, Tarks here.
Is there anyone deserving to be heard? None. Consent agenda.
The only question I had on the consent agenda was at the one meeting was a Zoom and that wasn't on there, is that significant or not?
I'll make an, I'll make the adjustment.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay. Motion passes. Communications, anything other than the department reports?
No.
Thank you. Committee reports, library board.
Uh, library board met Tuesday, August 12th. Uh, some updates, summer reading program ended with over two hundred and five people, great turnout. Uh, last month we had over twenty eight hundred visitors to the library. National night out went great, great turnout, and I guess we gave away a lot of books. Well. Uh. Fundraising, we're uh, gonna do a fundraiser at Culver's in October. Uh, November 8th, uh, the friends are sponsoring another puzzle night. Uh, we approved the meeting room policy at the library. We approved the 2026 budget draft. And like always, we're looking for board members and excuse my speaking, I've had some surgery done, so I'm not real clear, so end of report.
Thank you. How many board members are you looking for?
At least one.
Okay, thank you. Community foundation, we met last week, we had a financial audit completed, everything's in order. We talked about the future needs of, uh, for repairs, like our windows and the roof. And then we're starting to work to give, uh, tourist to school groups. End of report, finance committee?
Uh, finance committee met a few minutes ago and, uh, we approved, uh, July invoices of five hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty cents, moved that onto the full board for approval, end of report.
Thank you, building board?
Building board met at five thirty this evening, we denied an occupancy permit for Charlotte Moore at, no, I'm sorry.
We approved.
Oh, we approved that one, sorry, thank you. We approved the occupancy permit with extent, request to extend hours for Charlotte Moore at one twenty five nineteen West Hampton. The occupancy we denied was for Butler Stop LLC at forty seven fifty three North Hundred Twenty Fourth. We approved an occupancy for Rex Roofing, five one three nine North Hundred Twenty Fourth Street. Signed for them also, and we approved the fence at five zero three five Hundred Thirty First for Silver Nicole, end of report.
Thank you. Reported the administrator.
So it's been quite busy since our last meeting. Um, the main thing I'll touch on today, uh, is our flood response. Um, we obviously had, uh, quite a bit of rain, uh, on August ninth and August tenth. Um, we had about thirteen inches of rain approximately, it flooded out our lower park and a number of, uh, homes and several of our businesses in the village. Uh, we responded, uh, pretty much immediately by sending out emails, um, to our various agents such as the insurance, uh, John's disposal, our attorneys, uh, our engineers, letting them know what was going on. Um, I believe in my, my heart that I did as much as I could to try to communicate and get everything organized. I took a drive through, uh, Butler today and I can say that besides maybe one or two piles of, of items that were a little bit too big for John's to take, it looks very, very clean, a lot better than a lot of surrounding municipalities, um, who have actually been on the news, um, for their lack of, uh, cleanup. Um, so I feel very positive in, in our response to it, we're still continuing to respond and take questions. Um, I do know that, um, at some point soon, um, we will be having FEMA probably come out, uh, and doing some examination of the damage. Um, but besides that, we're still working on, um, our fire department, uh, study, um, our budget and, uh, a number of other items, uh, end of report.
And then from us as well, thank you very much for.
Yeah, thank you Ben.
The communications, I've heard nothing but positive and the garbage is cleaned up, you know, in, in a week, so that's tremendous.
That's a good.
All staff.
Craig and recruited a great guy.
Also, and I, I, I'm sorry, I should have thanked everybody that was also responding with. Aaron did a fantastic job DPW with all the time that they spent down there, I think they just finished up for the last day of dumpster pickup, so they've been doing a fantastic job. I apologize for neglecting them.
No, no, that, we know.
Ben, would you briefly went through your, uh, fire department that you guys are working on that, do you have any updates for us as far as, uh, where our mutual aid agreement is, because we had a special meeting, uh, on, on the twenty ninth to get a mutual aid agreement set up with, uh, Brookfield, where, where are we with that, do you know?
Yes, so the fire department, um, their board met last Monday. Um, they tabled it because they had some questions and concerns with regards to it. Um, currently Aaron and, um, McMahon are in with them, uh, right now discussing, um, their, their concerns. Um, so they're actively, um, addressing that as we speak.
So our lawyer though, okayed that.
Correct.
Agreement in Brookfield.
Brookfield signed off on it, their lawyer signed off, but our lawyer signed off on it.
So our depart, our current fire department has, is holding it up.
They are currently, they, they have questions that they're trying to get answered, um, and, and they, they are currently preventing it from getting fully implemented.
Alright. Thank you.
Public hearing, at this time I'll open for public hearing for a large gathering permit for the Optimus Club of Sussex and Lisbon, Lannan, Butler for the Hot Rods on Hampton event. It's on September eighth, twenty twenty five, that you'd read.
That's a, that's a typo, it should be September seventh.
Oh, seventh. September seventh.
That's yours date.
September seventh, twenty twenty five, in accordance, in accordance with section thirty dash three oh three of the municipal code. It's open at six oh seven. And go ahead and speak, your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Danielle Seoli, I am, uh, the co-chair with Leanne from the, uh, Leah Cumberwood from the Optimus Club to run Hot Rods on Hampton, September seventh, my address is forty seven twenty nine North Hundred Twenty Sixth Street, Butler, Wisconsin, five three, uh, zero zero seven.
And what is it you'd like to say?
Uh, I'm here, uh, we've been running it for years now, working together with various people of Butler. We have a good community day to get together, uh, it's a fundraiser for kids, uh, I believe we are looking for the, um, large gathering fee to be waived.
Uh, we can figure that out as we go, I'm not sure on that one. I, I think we usually waive it, but.
It's in the agenda, isn't it?
Could be.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so what we'll do is, well, I, this is public comments, I'll take comments at this time and then I'll see if anyone else, and then your agenda item comes up, you know, in a few minutes.
Okay.
So you, we're good, does anyone have any questions for the Optimus Club? Okay.
No.
Alright, is there anyone else that wants to speak at the public hearing? None, closed at six oh eight. New business. Discussion and possible action on resolution twenty five dash sixteen, a resolution thanking trustee Brad Meyer for his years of service to the village of Butler.
Yes, so as you know, uh, Mr. Meyer, uh, did resign his position, I believe effective August sixth. Um, his last, his last, uh, day of duty was at the national night out event where he helped serve, um, food to everyone who showed up. So we greatly appreciate his hard work and dedication, um, on that event and on all the events that he has, uh, sponsored. He, we would not have the events that we've had over the past several years without him. Uh, he's been a vital piece of the board, asking lots of good questions, um, coming to me, uh, asking clarifications, helping with some questions that I had. Um, just an all around very, very good guy, um, so I, I appreciate everything that he's done and I think that the village also appreciates. I think we had over twenty, thirty comments on the Facebook post announcing, uh, his resignation, so I think that goes to speak a lot.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty five sixteen.
Second.
Brad Meyer.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Pat, seconded. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes, and thank you Brad.
Thank you Brad.
Thank you, we're gonna miss you.
For everything that you've done to support me and the events over the last several years, uh, this board, our really wouldn't be as strong as it is, so thanks to all of you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you. Item B, resolution twenty five dash one eight, a resolution declaring a state of emergency for the village of Butler in response to the August ninth and August tenth flooding event.
So as I stated in the resolution, um, this passing resolution that, that declaring a state of emergency uh, does increase the seriousness, um, in the eyes of the state and of FEMA. Um, it is not required to get aid, um, it was a little bit unclear when I drafted this resolution if it was going to be required or not. Um, but it is not required to get aid, but it does help to go towards the narrative and also just to make a public statement stating the seriousness of it. Um, we had multiple teams out doing damage assessment where over thirty homes were rated as majorly damaged, meaning that there was, um, enough water in the basement to go above the electrical, um, outlets in a, in a central living area, there was a major appliance damage, meaning, uh, HVAC, um, furnace, water heater, water, uh, softener, um, something like that was severely damaged and inoperable. Um, there was also a number of homes that we couldn't get to just based off of the time, uh, constraints, so there's probably, I would say close to fifty homes that have experienced major damage along with a lot of our, um, big businesses, I know that the Butler Inn was devastated as well as Reese Graphics. So, um, we also did have the, the, the governor come in, um, and, and tour, uh, Reese Graphics, so I think that declaring a state of emergency, um, for, I believe a period through October would allow us to, uh, try to work out that recovery and, uh, work towards becoming a whole again as a village.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty five eighteen.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item C, discussion and possible action on approving a large gathering permit for the Optimus Club of Sussex and Lis- Lisbon, Lennon, Butler for Hot Rods on Hampton event on Sunday, September seventh, twenty twenty five, including a waiver of the permit fee.
Yes, so this is their annual large gathering permit. Um, we have sat down with, uh, Leanne and Danielle, um, to discuss the event. Um, I was actually unavailable to attend, but Chief Zuluski did sit down, um, and talk about the logistics. Um, we did talk over the phone a little bit about any questions that they had, and if I had any questions, um, seems like it's gonna be a great event like usual, hopefully what happened a couple of weeks ago doesn't happen on, on their date. Um, but, uh, that also is including the waiver of the permit fee, um, as we have done in numerous previous years.
And I would note that we've had no, over the years, it's gotten a lot better with communication, uh, organization. And, uh, I think last year we waived the fee without any issue.
Correct.
Because it is a good community event for Butler.
Is there a rain date for it? Do we ever, those things only even rained out one time, right?
You don't do a rain date.
Right, there's.
No rain date.
I don't think it did, you had it once where, where it rained, right, and you, there was no.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we, it was too much, we were all into, no, but they said it was too much to get everybody to do a second date.
Okay.
No.
So that'd be without a rain date. Any questions or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the large gathering permit and waive the fee for, uh, Hot Rods at Hampton.
I'll second.
I heard Tom and Eric. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item D, discussion and possible action on approving a request from the Optimus Club of Sussex and Lisbon, Lannan, Butler for an exemption from four dash one three one one B of the municipal code regarding outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for Hot Rods on Hampton on Sunday, September seventh, twenty twenty five, from nine AM to three PM.
Yes, so this is just their annual, um, request to, uh, waive the ordinance that states that you can't have open carry, um, outside of the bars. Um, so the bar, we have a number of bars that have their extension of premises on the agenda, and then this will allow people to carry in the streets as they go around the cars.
And I also make a note on that, that I don't recall any problems on that in the last couple of years either. Is there a motion? Or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the Optimist's Club, uh, for an exemption for four dash one three one one B of the municipal code regarding outside consumption of alcohol.
I'll second it. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
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 On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item E, discussion and possible action on approving a request from Bottoms Up for an extension of premise on September seventh, twenty twenty five for the Hot Rods on Hampton event for a time of nine AM to three PM. The one thing I note is on their letter, they had put sale stop at five PM, so I don't know if that's a discrepancy.
I saw, what was that?
Um, on the agenda here, we have from nine AM to three PM.
Mm-hmm.
But in their letter to you, they have till five PM.
Okay, um, I, we have a member from Bottoms Up here.
Just your name is fine.
So, I'm going with the classified, just to see if it was possible because we have our own parking lot.
Okay.
Actual parking lot that we push barriers up, with the Packers game, we're both working TVs, we're seeing if we could have somebody wait for a little slower shutdown and dispersal of everyone.
Okay.
Train about for private stuff.
What time is the game that day? Oh, it's a late game, alright.
Yeah. So.
Would there be any, uh, chief Luzuski, any opposition? None. Okay. So the motion then I would ask be from nine AM to five PM for Bottoms Up.
So is that you making the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the request from Bottoms Up from nine AM to five PM.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On opposition say nay, motion passes, thank you. Item F, discussion and possible action on approving a request from the Butler Inn for an extension of premise on September seventh, twenty twenty five, for the Hot Rods on Hampton event for a time of nine AM to three PM.
Uh, I did have a question from one of the trustees about, um, their, the status of them since they are currently closed, uh, due to the flooding. I didn't receive anything that said that they weren't going to, they're going to participate in Hot Rods in Hampton, so I kept it on the agenda just for approval for just in case.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Butler Inn for an extension on September seventh for Hot Rods in Hampton.
I'll second that.
Mark and Tom, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item G, discussion and possible action on approving a request from Cardinal Club for an extension of premise on September seventh, twenty twenty five for the Hot Rods on Hampton event for a time of nine AM to three PM.
No additional comments on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the Cardinal Club.
I'll second it.
I heard, uh, Tom and Pat. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Discussion and possible action on a special event vending permit for Charlotte Moore Event Center for the Hot Rods on Hampton event on September seventh, twenty twenty five.
I had a question on what they were going to be selling, I believe that they're going to be selling, um, Miss, uh, Charlotte does, uh, confectionery, um, in addition to hosting parties, so it would be her confectionery baked, uh, goods that she'd be selling out in front of her, her location.
Is there a time for that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, it should be the, um, it should be from nine AM to three PM.
Nine to three.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event vending permit for Charlotte Moore.
I'll second it.
My motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item I, discussion and possible action on a special event vending permit for Badger State Hemp Company for the Hot Rods on Hampton event on September seventh, twenty twenty five.
So they were, uh, present last year, um, I don't recall them having any, um, issues, um, there was just a little bit of a concern, um, by the police department just because we weren't sure exactly what was being sold. Um, so that's why we've started to enforce the special vending permit just to make sure that we're, we're getting everybody accounted for, so.
Their application says, uh, seven to five.
Okay, and then, yeah, that should be, uh, changed to the nine to three.
So it will be nine to three.
Yeah, that should be during the event.
Would they have setup time, or is that, is that in the building, or is that a special tent?
That, I believe is gonna be a special tent, I believe last year they were relocated relatively close to the fire department.
So they might have some setup time.
Yeah, so setup time is, is fine, just selling the actual.
Right.
Goods should happen during the event.
Got it, okay. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the special event for Badger State.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
And that, 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 the minutes will read the nine to three then, right?
Yes, if, okay, yeah, if we, uh, Mr. Kazdor, if it's that, what your motion would be just to change that to nine to three?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it would add it in, because, uh, then the application says seven to five, but in our motion it would be nine to three. Um, discussion on the motion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay. Motion passes. Item J, discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty six through twenty twenty seven data processing services, property tax assessment and tax bill and agreement between the village of Butler and Waukesha County.
So this, this is just an agreement, um, that will allow us to, uh, continue our, our already existing services with Waukesha County to process our property tax bills. They do all the combination, the, um, processing, the calculations, um, and then the printing. Um, so that will, this agreement basically is, is the, the charge for the service, um, per parcel and then kind of outlining what their, what their duties and responsibilities are along with ours.
And that includes collecting the second payment?
Correct, yes.
Same agreement that we've had in the past.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty six, the twenty twenty seven data processing services, property tax assessment and tax billing agreement between Village of Butler and Waukesha County.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item K, discussion and possible action on a rooming house license for the property located at forty seven fifty three North Hundred Twenty Fourth Street, W Group of Wisconsin LLC, owner Davina Morrissey, agent.
So this, um, item in the village's opinion is moot as they currently do, they got denied their occupancy earlier this evening. Um, so this item and the item upcoming, um, are, they are not able to move forward with, um, due to not having that, that occupancy permit.
Would we table this just in, uh, for any reason, or we, do we need a motion then?
That's, that's up for the board to decide.
Uh, so what was the board's reasoning on the building board denial of the occupancy permit?
Mr. Holman, do you, I can speak to that a little bit.
Right, I, you were here, but I don't know if the, if you, I just wanted a reiteration, it's a bit lengthy, but after hearing the parties involved representing, uh, never get the right name here. Butler Stop. Uh, and due to the history involved and the, uh, state of the information that they presented us, the drawings and sketches of the, uh, layout, the concerns from the fire department, the track history with us and their owner, uh, being located with the gas station, uh, based on those things, we deny the occupancy.
Can that ruling be challenged?
The, I believe that it can be appealed, um, I would have to do quick research into, um, after the meeting obviously to see what would be, be the appeals process, but I do believe that it can be appealed.
Okay, so I would like to table that then, just in case it gets appealed and then it has to come back.
Sure.
Do you need a motion on that?
I do need a motion.
Um, my motion would be to table this just in case the occupancy is, uh, challenged, and this is then a, a new agenda item for us.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to table.
Mr. Kazdor, I'm sorry, can, uh, for that, can, do you want the motion to basically read unto, uh, pending any type of appeal, so if it's appealed and successful.
Yes.
It would then come before you?
Yes. Yeah, based on if it, through the result of the appeal, that this might come back in front of us.
And Mr. Benjamin, that's okay with you as second?
Correct.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to table as we discussed, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Item L, discussion and possible action on granting a class B reserve combination retail license from August twenty ninth, twenty twenty five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty six for Butler Stop LLC located at forty seven fifty three North Hundred Twenty Fourth Street, Butler five three zero zero seven for Butler Stop LLC doing business as Derby District located at forty seven fifty three North Hundred Twenty Fourth Street, Butler five three zero zero seven.
Same notes apply.
So was, um, same, same issues with the bar issue as the rooming issue?
Correct, it was, the occupancy for, was, was for both. Um, so with that, the ordinance in, uh, chapter four of the municipal code states that you cannot have, um, a liquor license without having an occupancy permit.
Okay.
Since that was denied, they are not allowed to have the liquor.
Can cla, can this be appealed as well?
The, the same applies for the occupant's permit, so if that occupant's permit gets, uh, appealed and then, uh, the decision reversed, then yes.
Okay, so at this time I would make a motion to table, same reason as item K, that this could possibly come back in front of us someday. Is there a second?
Again, I'll make a second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table, item L, is there any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On opposition say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Item M, discussion and possible action on an application for a permit to alter a street right of way for We Energies to relocate a street light.
So this is part of the Butler Tool Project, um, they need to move one of the street lights from where it currently is to, um, I believe it's the X that's on the, um, in the agenda packet provided by, um, Barbara from We Energies, um, so they just need to have the board approve them, uh, relate, relocating that light.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a permit to alter a street light on the right of way and for We Energy to relocate a street light.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition say nay, motion passes. Item N, presentation and discussion of the twenty twenty four audited financial statements from Baker Tilly. Thank you, thank you for waiting.
Ben is handing out all the goodies that you get as part of the audit.
Multiple packets, you know, microphone is on.
So, good night Myers.
Okay. Yeah, have a good night.
Thanks again Brad.
Thanks Brad.
Thank you Brad.
So these things are in our packet, are they not? These things are in our packet already, are they not?
The draft ones are.
So you, oh, just, this is the audit, you wouldn't have to say, everything's been taken care of for, for you guys, so. You can stay if you want. Give you a warning.
We're losing them, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, it's all yours, thank you.
It's all you know.
Perfect. I'm Michelle Holmer, I'm a senior manager at Baker Tilly, you've seen me before in this role, but, um, what I'm gonna do tonight is present the very high level summary of the audit, the financial statements of twenty twenty four. So you have both, both packets, both bullets that are issued as part of the audit. Uh, we'll start with the financial. We'll start with the financial statement items. And the objective of your audit is for auditors to be able to issue an opinion on those financial statements. So I've stated one through three of those financial statements is the audit opinion. So we issued what's called an unmodified opinion. So you may have heard of this as a clean audit opinion. So this means that your financial statements, the material, accurate. They include all the required disclosures that are required to be presented in them. That policy principles or policies have been followed, and that's consistent from year to year. You may notice that on the opinion, there is what's called an ecosystem matter paragraph. And that there's a new accounting standard that had to be implemented during the year. Compared to as the S P one oh one, or compensated absence, and there's no operational change for the village. It's a presentation item in your financial statements. So nothing changes in operation. Looking at the funds of the village. So details of these funds can be found up in pages fifteen to seventeen. And we'll focus in on kind of the income statement of those, so that's about page sixteen. But the general fund is the main operating fund of the village. So for twenty twenty four, revenues and expenditures for both of those, two point seven million dollars. So overall, the general fund decreased fund balance by about sixteen thousand dollars down to seven hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. Now, this is made up of a couple of different buckets of amounts. The first is considered non-spendable fund balance, and this is items such as delinquent personal property taxes, prepaid items where the cash has gone out the door, they hasn't hit the fund balance or the income statement yet. Or non-current receivable over about thirty five thousand of both these have the ambulance receipt. So those are monies you can't spend. The second bucket is what was all committed. That's about thirty three thousand dollars. And this is your non-laxing funds of the village. They all have a specific purpose and the attractive funds that are included in those. Next bucket is the assigned fund balance, and this is about twenty eight thousand dollars. Village typically assigns a portion for compensated absences. So that's what those amounts are earmarked by management for. And this leaves about six hundred fifty two thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance in the debt account. And that's what the village can use to, as they, as you see fit. So the village has a minimum fund balance policy that says you need at least ten percent of the next year's budgeted expenditures. With that, six hundred fifty two thousand, you're at twenty four, forty eight percent. So you are in compliance with your minimum fund balance policy. Next fund is the debt service fund. Overall, this fund increased fund balance by about fifteen hundred dollars during the year. So fund balance is up to about eighty thousand dollars. All of this is restricted for future debt service. The library special revenue fund, increased fund balance by about thirty six thousand dollars up to thirty three thousand eight hundred. And all of this is earmarked restricted for library purposes. Next is your borrowed money fund, and this is where you borrow debt to fund capital projects. So overall, during the year, this fund increased about a hundred twelve thousand dollars up to about nine hundred seventy thousand dollars. Now, this is all restricted as well because you borrowed for capital projects, so you had to use that on projects that fall within that amount. The far right column is the non-major funds. So the detail of these can be found up pages seventy and seventy one. But this is the equipment fund as well as the park and rack fund. So both of these funds combined increased fund balance by about eighteen thousand dollars. Now, the capital projects equipment fund has about three hundred eighty four thousand dollars in it. And park and rack is at about eleven thousand dollars. All of those are for those specific purposes. The three utilities we'll touch on briefly next. So the water utility. If we kind of look at your operating revenue compared to your operating expenditures, right, that's this. Water had operating income of about a hundred seventy one thousand dollars. There was a debt issuance this year, so there was some additional costs related to issuing that debt and increased interest. So at the end of the year, the water utility decreased net position by about ninety six hundred dollars, down to about one point four million dollars. Now, this is broken out into buckets, just like everything else that we do. The first bucket of this net position is called net investment in capital assets. So that's about nine hundred thirty one thousand dollars, which is the infrastructure that you have for the water utility. So the non-depreciated piece minus any related debt. There's also a new restriction in this fund this year for debt service. And because you issued revenue bonds in the water utility, you have to have certain items that is not restricted. So that's about sixty three thousand dollars that's sitting there. So that leaves about four hundred five thousand of unrestricted funds in the water utility. When you look at the stormwater utility, overall stormwater increase net position during the year of about eighty eight thousand dollars up to two point five million. This is only broken out into two buckets, but two point one million is that net investment in capital assets. And then the unrestricted that the village can use is about four hundred thirteen thousand dollars. So your utility is the last item. And during the year, net position increased by about fifty six thousand dollars up to one point six million. This one also is broken up into three buckets with five hundred seventy five thousand being that net investment in capital assets. Fifty four thousand is restricted for equipment replacement. And then about one million dollars is restricted or unrestricted to use as needed. So overall, the funds of the village are in very much change. No deficit fund balances or net position. So that's high level summary of the financial information. The second packet that Ben handed out was our reporting and insights document. So this is more of a narrative of how the audit, how it went and the elements for consideration. So first couple pages outline responsibilities and objectives of the audit. So responsibilities as your auditors as well as management responsibilities. We don't get into any internal control outcomes. So we're required to report any material weaknesses or significant inefficiencies as part of the audit. The village has two material weaknesses, which I'll start by saying, these are very normal for a municipality your size. And they are not something that raises the red flag all over the place. So the first one is internal control or financial reporting, which because me as your auditors prepare your financial statements and make material journal entries, we have to report them. The second one is segregation of employees. With limited staff, you can't segregate everything to complete abilities. But I mentioned that over the past several years, there's been steps taken by Ben and his team to make sure, can we cross anything off the list? Is there anything we can do to take these items out? So nothing to be concerned about, but just be aware. We also report any other comments and recommendations. And if you're one that likes to look year over year at these reports, we've talked in the past about utility billing. There's been some testing that we've done and some analysis that we've worked with Ben with to figure out the utility rates that are being charged. And we fixed one item and then we come up with, okay, there's another item that we need to look into. So I think at this point, if I can correct me if I'm wrong, I think everything is squared away. And at this point in twenty twenty five, all rates are being properly charged and allocated. So it's just something to look for going forward to make sure you keep it up. So it was a lot of cleanup that needed to happen over the last eight years, it seems like, but we're in a good spot with that now in twenty twenty five.
Do you think, can I ask a question? Do you think that we've got all that figured out now? I mean, nothing, we shouldn't find anything new?
I don't think so, but you know, based on past history, there's always something that you'll come up with. Dig deep into each individual president or record that is charged, what you might have a different size or things like that. But I think that piece is the problem, but you're in a good spot, knowing what you're charging.
Yeah, and I'll just make a quick comment, just because we do have probably possibly people at home and people in the audience. It was mainly the water utility was dealing with private and private fire protection charges. They were just some mismatched sizes that we had to go out and we had the fire department and the DPW double check. We tore pretty much all three of the utilities down to the studs and rebuilt it, making sure that everything was being allocated properly. There is a little bit of sewer that was, we had an issue with, with the billing, but that's now been corrected. And utility rates are now, you know, lower as a result of that this year. So we've done everything that I can think of. Again, we'd had the ERU analysis, which helped to lower the storm sewer rates going forward as we found more of the ERUs in the village. So we've done everything possible that we can think of to try to make sure that these are correct. Thank you.
We also include in this report required communications we have to have as your monitors. So if there's any new accounting figures, which I touched on before, we have to report those. Any accounting estimate was in the financials here in four, listing of the material journal entries that we made. They're all included there. The last piece of this report is called two-way communication. And this is really us reaching out to you, the board, to say, you know, my audit's not just one year. You know, we're around all year. And I think I talk with Ben frequently about questions that come up and things like that, but it's not just a relationship that's going to be embedded. You know, you can reach out to us at any point if you have any questions or concerns or just want to talk through anything. So we are around. And the last thing I have is, you know, Ben was very helpful. Ben and Aaron are both very helpful to get this audit across the line, and their hard work is much appreciated. It's a pleasure to work with them. So our contact information is on here. So feel free to reach out at any time, but if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Michelle, before that, I just want to make another really quick statement. We had the, the fund balance decline in the general fund, I believe mainly due to two employee retirements that put the wages over the budgeted amounts. So that's, so we actually saw on the unassigned, that actually increased while the assigned was decreased mainly because of that. And we did fix the decline in the fund balance with the water utility by going up for the rate case last October. So that should be fixed now. And DPW with Jim. And we did also pass a new fund balance policy in January of this year to up it to twenty to twenty five percent. So I did send that to you, so you should have it for next year.
And those material weaknesses we've discussed every year, and then there's just nothing we can do about the, because we're so small.
Well, yeah, and unless, you know, you guys want to take over doing the financial statements with no material journal entries, it's a really cost benefit type thing where we live and breathe in these financial statements. You guys don't. So it makes it a lot easier. We have full cooperation with Ben and Karen.
And I know we have internal controls as well for that, so. Excellent. Always good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Questions? Thank you. Item O, discussion and possible action on a request from the village administrator on pathways to fund fire and EMS services.
So this item is being put forward because I would like the village board's opinion before we get too far into the budget and kind of finalizing that. As we look forward to next year, as the board is well aware and we've been advertising, back in April, we hired, we put out for an RFP to have a contractor get brought on because the fire department signaled that they were struggling with coverage and finding staff members and also some questions about equipment and the long-term viability of some of their capital infrastructure. So we brought in McMahon to assess the department. In June, when we awarded that contract, that same night, the fire department stated to us that they are going to be folding up and not continuing service as of April of twenty twenty six. So that then sent us down the path of finding an alternative. And I believe it was about a month ago that we put forward a request for proposal for four surrounding municipalities to put in bids, along with the fire department itself, to put in a bid to see who could cover the village when it came to fire services and EMS services. Either way, costs are going to increase. I don't want to say dramatically, but they're going to go up pretty substantially. McMahon has said that the cost will be anywhere from six hundred to, six hundred thousand to a million dollars for that type of service, at least based on their estimations. We don't know what those are going to be because we haven't received any bids as of yet. Those are due on September third. We did extend that from the beginning of August to the beginning of September because four of the bidders did request that they have more time. I'm hoping that the most recent floods have further delayed the process in that, but we are moving forward on that. So what I'm looking for is input from the board on how we should go about financing it, particularly through twenty twenty six. Because pretty much any pathway that we go down, whether it's through going through a referendum or going down the route of the fire service fees, which is allowable under state law and many other municipalities have implemented to pay for their fire service. It's more than likely that we're not going to have everything ready to go for next year. What the referendum will have to take place probably in August, not August, April, if not August or November of twenty twenty four. The fire service charges, we would be probably basing it off of square footage of improved property. That's going to require a lot of manual labor on the assessor's end to get all that information to us and then working with the county to try to get everything situated for the tax bills. It would just, it's going to require a lot of effort. We talked with the Village of Summit, who successfully implemented this in twenty twenty three for the fire protection services after the referendum failed. It took about six to eight months for them to go full circle. We spoke with the assessor today and it sounds like he's, it's going to, it's going to take a good amount of time for him to go through and, and get that square footage. Not to mention that we also have to talk to the not, the currently tax exempt properties and get their square footages and talk with the state for the state assessment, because there's multiple properties in the village that are assessed by the state that we need to get square footages from too. So with that, I kind of wanted to have a discussion with the board at, you know, it doesn't have to be a final discussion, but which pathway are you leaning towards? Because I kind of need to know, so I know how to start, where I need to go with the, with the budget. What, do you want to go towards the fire protection charges or do you want to go towards the referendum? I have corresponded with all of you in my weekly updates, the pros and cons of each one of them. But I think for twenty twenty six, what we're going to have to do is probably do some borrowing for the capital projects to free up all of that levy, bring that down to zero. Have some of, basically have some of the, if not all of the expenditure restraint money that I'm expecting us to get to go into the general fund instead of the capital fund, along with doing, doing the sale of all of the fire department equipment, all of the trucks and stuff that are currently there to make up the deficit there for that. So again, it's going to be a difficult budget for twenty twenty six. It should hopefully, once we get clarification and we get funding in place, twenty twenty seven should be easier when it comes to that type of funding. But I am looking for just some discussion and a direction from the board on how you want us to move forward with that. Do you want a referendum? Do you want the fire service charge? Are you in support? Do you want some more explanation as to the plans of the village to cover for twenty twenty six? So I'll go back to you.
Okay, so the options. Referendum is, is one thing we could do. So if we did a referendum, what would be the pros and cons summed up?
Sure. So the pros would be, we, you know, the voters of the village, through direct representation, obviously with the board, they elect you and then you vote on items on their behalf. But this would be more of a direct representation of what the community wants to do. So they would vote and either approve or deny the, the amount that we would budget or we would levy. That, in all honesty, again, I'm not trying to be biased here, is the one pro that I could see. The con is if there's a failure of the referendum, then we're going to have to go to the fire service charges anyways because we need to fund fire service. And that can backfire as the, if the voters vote, let's just say sixty forty to deny it, and then we go and do the direct charge, that it doesn't look good. It's not, it's not very politically appealing because we're basically saying, well, thanks for your opinion, but we have to do this anyways. So we kind of end up in the same, the same spot.
But that's kind of true, right? We have to do it anyways.
Correct.
We really don't have a choice. It's just which road we want to go down to try to get it, right? There's no choice. I mean.
And for financial sake too, with the referendum. And the, for financial sake too, with the referendum, we would be levying whatever we would want to project out. Let's just say we get the RFPs back, the lowest bidder is, I'll just say eight hundred thousand. And we need to levy a certain amount, let's just say five hundred, six hundred thousand for just the extra for the one year. If we have a five year plan, we have to levy the amount in year five. And then basically levy that each year after that until levy a year five, even if we're not spending all of that money. So we can't, it's not like a school referendum where the school says, okay, we want five hundred or fifty million dollars. And we're just going to draw as we need it. It's you have to levy the full amount, no matter what the amount is, right up front and that's levied every single year. With the fire protection charge, it is going to be just what was needed that year. So if costs for whatever reason go down, the charges would go down as a result. But then this is, it would be changed every year as we, as the budget sees fit. So we're not going to be over, overcharging people. We're not going to be charging people year five rates in year one. It would be year one rates and year one and year two and year two.
Okay, so the first option is referendum.
Correct.
The voters decide, we could approve or deny that. Either way, though, at the end of the day, we need money. We're, we're going to need to increase revenues somehow to pay for the fire.
Correct.
Charge. Okay, so then the second option is a fire service charge would get added to what the property tax bill?
Yes, and what would happen is the property tax levy would then decline by the amount that we levied for fire protection services in two thousand and fourteen. That is how the law, the state law is currently structured. So it wouldn't be that we were keeping this, the tax levy at the exact same amount and then levying more on top of that. It, the levy would fall by about two hundred and ninety-five thousand. And then we would levy the special charge on top of that. So it would net out to some degree.
And with the fire service charge, as we discussed, everyone then pays it, the churches, the schools.
Correct. All, all the tax exempt properties would have, have a charge based on their, the square footage of their improved surface. And then even the empty lots would have a, just a fixed charge of about, you know, whatever the board would decide, fifty dollars, twenty-five dollars. Added on to it, just so then those lots are also getting service charges assessed.
And it should be noted that right now those institutional don't pay.
Correct. They don't pay property taxes at all. So they get all those, all those services for zero dollars.
And then time wise, it it appears that twenty twenty-six would be very tough. Everything we've talked about would be, no matter what we do, twenty twenty-six would not be reasonable. We'd have to push us to twenty twenty-seven.
Correct. And that would allow us to do, you know, answer the public comments. Do question and answer, do a really good job of of advertising what's going on and explaining. You know, the costs and benefits, pros and cons of everything. Just trying to get all that done in two months and then say, hey, surprise, there's a new charge in your tax bill. It's, it's not going to go over well.
So for twenty twenty-six, our plan would be to just borrow the money.
It would be to borrow the money in the capital fund to get, to have no tax dollars being allocated to that. That would then free up money to then be allocated to the general fund. We would have the expenditure restraint monies going into the the general fund as well as the monies received from the sale of the fire department equipment. We're currently assessing an estimated value of all of the major equipment. How much that would, we would get if we sold all of that. And we're basically being very conservative. So when we do the estimations, we're looking at the lowest possible estimation, just because we don't want to over, over budget and then under deliver. And that should get us to a good space depending on where those RFPs come in. That's the, that's the big key.
Are we assuming that we will definitely be selling our apparatus? Because depending on the response to the RFP, they may choose to utilize our, one or more of our rigs.
Correct. And, 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 yeah, and that's where, that's where I'm, we're trying to be as conservative as possible, just kind of gain, getting that information. And again, we would have that and we would know prior to the budget being adopted, what we're planning on doing with those, those items. The rigs themselves are probably in the nineties. We, we probably, I doubt that we're going to want to use those.
Getting this right. So now it's only, there's three options.
Well.
So borrow, fire service charge. The borrowing is just for, for this coming year. But that's why I thought we were a pathway, but like we were going to do a fire service charge first and then see what.
Uh, we won't, we won't have, no matter, we don't have enough time in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, to prepare for that.
To prepare for twenty twenty-six.
Where are the other two options? Okay, so you are actually looking for the pathway as far as twenty twenty-seven.
Correct. Yeah, for the, for, for basically, yeah, yeah. So for, for that to, to see how we wanted to move forward, because this is all the prep time that we're going to need to then hit the ground running.
Okay.
And I, I would just say as well that the fire department could still put a RFP in if they wanted. Our current fire department, who knows what they decide.
Correct.
So then the assessment of what current equipment we have would have to be relooked at. That's all.
Sure.
For twenty twenty, so we have two different things going here. Twenty twenty-six, we, we kind of know we're going to borrow because we have to. And then twenty.
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be a, a one year and one day note that would cover whatever is not covered by grants and other type of income in the capital fund. That would then get levied against the tax, the tax bill for twenty twenty-six. Then we would have the, the charge, either the fire service charge or the referendum coming down the pipeline in twenty twenty-six. And then that borrowing would come off of the property tax bill in twenty twenty-seven and then the fire service charge with the referendum levy will be levied in twenty twenty-seven.
So that we, does that money get paid back then? Is there ever going to be?
Correct. That would, that, yep.
I, I like the idea, and we'll take more questions, but I, I kind of like the idea of just doing the fire service charge. Because if the referendum fails, then we have to do it anyways. And, and if it fails, well.
I would say that the fire service charge would be because we're not levying, if we can, if we do the five year plan and we would have to levy in year one, what we need in year five.
So that would be less costly to tax pay.
For the fire service charge, yes.
Actual cost.
Because everybody pays.
Actual cost every year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which, I mean.
It's a no brainer. It's, it's a no brainer.
You know, as a taxpayer here, I, I would appreciate that.
Trying to explain again, a ref, because you hear every time that there's a referendum at the state level, the news is all over how confusing they are. And again, we would have to get that process done like pretty much in like October to try to get something on the ballot for August. Or not for August, for April, I should say. So again, that's a pretty tight timeframe.
I think it makes sense to do the fire service chart. I mean, as of today, to just go down that path. Do you need a vote on it? Go down that?
Yeah, it says or.
It's possible action. So if you want to make a motion to direct the village to do that or if it's a discussion, it's fine.
Does the board have any additional questions on this topic?
No.
And this can always be updated and changed and things like that. Do you want for the motion to include the twenty twenty-six plan as well?
Sure, that if, if the board chooses, yes.
And then if, if by a chance that the fire service charge could be completed by twenty twenty-six, did you want that in the motion as well?
That.
On the outside chance.
That, that's up for the board to decide. I, if you want to include that, that's fine.
All right. So you want a pathway. Got it.
All right. I'm, I'll make a motion to pursue the pathway of a fire service charge for the twenty twenty-seven budget. And to borrow internally as needed.
I'll second that. Okay, does that make sense for the administration? Okay.
Okay.
Right enough.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item P, discussion on possible action on strategic goals for twenty twenty-six.
So I had one of our interns, Caitlin, go and look at a, a bunch of different municipalities budgets. Because we received notice, the board had indicated to me, I believe in my one year review that they like to have, that our budget gets the annual award from the Government Finance Officers Association, I believe is what the acronym stands for. We get that annually for the, for the quality of our budget, the presentation of it. But they said they have changed their requirements and now within, I think, the next year or two, we need to adapt in strategic goals into the budget to maintain that award. So I'm looking, and besides that, it's also, you know, a good thing to have for direction. Because as I had mentioned before, it's good to have direction from the board on where staff is should, should be focusing their time. So I provided, I think, three to four pages of different municipalities' goals in the packet for you to look at. I have, you know, four or five of them off the top of my head. If you wanted to care about those, if you had your own, that's, that's great as well. And then once we kind of decide what those are, Aaron and I can work with our interns to kind of get some points of action, how we get those, those accomplished.
What are the goals that you have? Did you put them in the backup?
I, I did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I did put, I did put the other ones. One of them would be obviously public safety. Continuing, basically ensuring that we have that smooth transition from the way that we currently operate the fire department to that new way, whether that is through the contractor or through a rehabbed Butler Fire Department. Also, just the investment, the continued investment in the police department with, with their needs. And also the contract negotiations that are going to be happening starting next year for the twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-nine union contract, capital projects. Basically, continuing to, to see where improvements need to be made, including what we really need to probably do some televising in our sanitary sewer on one, two, four, because some of the areas in next year's road project are going to include spot repairs because some of that infrastructure is failing. So continuing to examine and identify needs that we have in those areas. Financials, obviously, the budget keeps getting tougher and tougher each year as we continue to struggle with state imposed levy limits. And very slim options on how to get revenue otherwise. So continuing to do some analysis with that. And Aaron, what, I believe I had one or two more. Can you remember what I, what I talked to you about?
So it was, to my recollection, we had public safety. We had also potentially an economic development goal. If you wanted to try and say have something specific for Hampton Avenue, something more broad across the village. If you want to have another one about village aesthetics and property maintenance standards. So it doesn't have to be specifically a strategic goal that's like a budget related one. It can be more community development as well.
Good. By what time would you need to have this sort of like crafted for it to be what you want it to be for the budget process?
I would say I would want to have it by the beginning of October. So I'll probably start putting the budget document together starting in September. And like I said, this would probably just get inserted along with the, I forgot what that's called. I'm blanking on it, but basically I kind of give you a narrative.
Page and.
Yeah, I give you that narrative and it would probably be just inserted down there.
And there's, I mean, I really like the examples that you sent. That's very good to think over a lot of that stuff. It sounds to me like you are, have a pretty clear idea in your mind. Would there be such a thing as you drafting a very, very general outline that we could look at? And then between now and next meeting, and we meet twice next month, right? So between now and then, we can take a little more time and sift through these and see if there's any, you know, one or two or three things we could add. And then kind of come up with that since we have a month to do it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. That, that's, that is completely feasible. I, I don't think that it would take too much of our, our time to, to do. Like I said, we're kind of just, we're.
Just bullet points.
Yeah.
Not a lot of.
Yeah, we're not going to go into a bunch of nuance, but yeah, we can definitely put that together.
You kind of got it more in your mind, but then I like how Aaron said it doesn't have to be just, you know, fire that's in front of us right now. We could look a little more broader than that and not that we need to go too far and dump a ton on you, but just to be open to that based on some of this other input. Whatever people are doing, I think would be healthy for us.
Yep, I just kind of wanted to have that, that started that discussion.
I, I like the property maintenance topic. Economic development could be tough because we just don't have anything getting built. But then I came up with a few more to add to your list and that would be equipment needs. So police cars, fire trucks, dump trucks, you know, what, what do we need? And kind of tied into that is capital improvement projects. And then staff retention.
Yep. Aaron's making a note.
That, that should be a good start. Does anyone have anything else to add?
As far as, you know, we can't get development, but is there something we can look at where we can possibly work with the building owners and property owners now of the commercial and work with them? With trying to help get businesses that want to be here and stay versus them just, hey, I just need to get this rented. But with that, with some help from us, maybe to get different businesses here that we may want for the village.
Yeah, and one of the things is I'm going to steal a play out of the Waukesha County Economic Development Council's playbook where them and I, Tree Still and I went to a lot of the bigger businesses in Butler and sat down with them. I established a lot of really good connections and now I, you know, connected to their CFOs and their CEOs. So if I need something, if there's a question, I can go right to them. I want to, one of the ideas that I have is meeting with some of the, you know, particularly on Hampton Avenue, some of the building owners that own the multi-tenant buildings and seeing what they need, how, you know, if there's something that's preventing them from, you know, doing this or doing that. Or some that they've not under, that they don't understand about the village code and the processes that we have, any ways that we can maybe even simplify things. If they think that this, this is just way too confusing, I need this to be simplified. Okay, great, awesome. We can look at, at doing something about that. So Aaron and I can definitely work to make contact.
With, with the used building owners.
And.
Help them.
And to Paul's point, and I just want to build on what you said and add to that, that, that we don't have the space to develop something maybe brand new. But there is turnover and attrition. So, you know, to what Eric was saying, so if we got to identify certain types of businesses that we desire here, if you would just even, even have some beginning generalization of that and see where that fits in when the vacancies come up, you know, that would be helpful as well. So.
Yeah, and there's always redevelopment. There's always, you know, even just internal remodeling can make a huge difference. You know, going past reality construction at night when you see that lit up, it looks very nice in there. So even just internal remodels can make a world of difference.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I don't think you need a action on, I mean, you don't need a motion on that. That was more just discussion. Is that a good, good start?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we're, we're clear that we're going to have that outline from you that we can still have input on.
Yep.
At some point.
Well, honestly, we'll probably have something thrown together by the first meeting in September.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other topic or discussions on that item? All right, moving on. At this time, the board may consider convening into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C Wisconsin statutes to consider the employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee of which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The item to be discussed is the twenty twenty-six non-represented employee wages. And in that discussion, I will have Ben attend. Do you want Aaron involved? Does Chief Zoloski need to be for any reason?
Brian, can you state it so for a little bit?
Okay. And that should be good then. So I will close that at seven oh seven. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session per section nineteen dash eighty-five one C.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll.
Benjamin?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Holman?
Yes.
Castor?
Yes.
Serena?
We are closed.
We're in trouble.